So, on our agenda here, what I would like to do at this point is, rather than, because we have a guest here, I'd like to ask Karen Crowley from the SPCA, Karen? Karen, would you approach the podium, please? So, we're gonna jump to number three, which is just a discussion. So, our cat problem in Ole Miss has not gone away, and it is something that I not only deal with in terms of as an alderman, but it's something that I've now been dealing with trapping colonies and kittens and feral cats myself. And Karen and the SPCA have been amazing to work with. And so, we have been working with the cat nippers for a while, and unfortunately, I think the cat nippers under, with COVID, lack of staffing. They're really based out of South Buffalo, and so, there was some difficulty trying to get their home down here in Cat County. The SPCA has helped take in foster or kittens, litters that I've captured here in Ole Miss, for neutering and vaccinating them, and now Karen is doing so in the city of Ole Miss. And she reached out to me, and so, I'm trying to perhaps bring her before us here tonight to have just an update on the newest problem she's facing here in the city of Ole Miss, and what she's trying to handle for us. But more so, just direction with the mayor, with the council, for us to enter a similar relationship with the SPCA that we did with the cat nippers, which was to compensate them for any of the cats. They do a TNVR, which is to trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release. They take all of their cats to the same place the cat nippers did. It's a low-cost facility, Operation Pets, out of Buffalo. And they've been spending the money, you know, taking care of our barrels and our cats here. And so, I would like to just offer the opportunity to compensate, I should say reimburse them for that service. So Karen, would you just give us maybe a little update? You reached out, you said you've got a large colony here in Ole Miss you will be addressing, and kind of give us an update on just how crazy the cat world is now after COVID. It's just been rampant, so.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, it's COVID hurt because a lot of the clinics shut down while we were in quarantine. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? There you go. Thank you. So yes, COVID hurt the overpopulation even further. His clinic shut down some of them for close to a year. So that allowed cats to reproduce pretty much unchecked. So, starting last May, everybody kind of got back to the business of doing TNVR. We did a, I think we did over 110 cats and juvenile adults last year in the timeframe that we were able to take them to the clinics. This year, we started in May. We get so many calls all across the county, but obviously, a lot from the city of Ole Miss because the problem doesn't simply go away until you really get serious about doing the neutering, the vaccinating, and having people keep their cats inside. But the latest area, that hotspot, as I call it, is I walked in expecting maybe 10 or 15 cats. And what I saw when I went over on the evening when the cats started coming out was probably 30-plus cats, at least three litters of different ages, five or six per litter. So I thought to myself, okay, I'm looking at probably 30-plus cats and kittens just in this property. I'm probably already getting pregnant because they can get pregnant while they're still nursing their kittens. So, I'm really gonna be focusing on this property more than when we get a call for a male cat that's running. Right now, that's not the priority. We're trying to engage where we need to help the most.
Where is that?
It's in between Boardman Park, Brookview, Fourth Street, that, I mean, there's, and I see there's probably at least five or six houses and a church where these cats are kind of congregating. And, you know, when people feel bad, it's when they put food out. One person mentioned, oh, I got a nasty letter from the city. I shouldn't be feeding, and I don't know if that's from umpteen years ago. I have no idea. But, so I think they're a little bit scared to raise their hand and say, hey, we've got a problem. But somebody happened to call or contact. I think we posted on social media, if you need help, give us a call. So, this was one of the calls, and the first call that I answered from that area was, oh, there might be five or 10. And then the next person I talked to from that are, oh, there might be 15. And then when I went, I, okay, we've got a lot more on that to deal with. So, we just did the first five. Lucky enough, there were five females, so that's five less females able to reproduce at this point. And I'll go back this weekend, pick up another five, and just kind of try to keep going until that area, the hotspot, gets under control, trying to find homes for some of the kittens that I can, that are young enough that we can hopefully tame and, you know, get off the streets. But when John and I were talking, you know, if there is money available, it would be very hopeful to be reimbursed. Right now, I go out and beg for donations to try to get people to help. We had a grant at one point, that money is all gone. So, it's stretching us to try to do this, but we really want to because it's the right thing to do.
And the fact that we have set aside money in our budget, I believe, the mayor hasn't been used really in the last couple, in the last couple of years, right? About $5,000 or so?
It's, well, the last time, August the 3rd of 2021 was the last time we had anything with the cat nippers.
Right.
So it's been, I must have gone out a year, yeah.
And I wasn't sure, I have to take a look. I thought we had encumbered the money that was left in the last budget, but maybe not.
I think we did.
No?
I think we took that money out.
Okay, okay. So Karen, can you tell us then a little bit about, as far as the numbers go? What is Operation Pets? Obviously, you've got to hit the cats up to Operation Pets. There might be some, you know, operation, not to mention fuel costs, things like that, right? But what Operation Pets charges for the TNVR process?
So Operation Pets for the feral cats or rescue partners charges $25 for a feral cat that doesn't have any issues, and that's give, gives them distemper vaccination, rabies vaccination, spay or neuter, add DOR or Mergon flea treatment. So they come back with all of that done for $25. If there's any complications, or they find that the cat needs an antibiotic injection because they have an upper respiratory, they will do that on the spot. They basically take care of what's needed that's not considered extreme, just their care. So $25 for the base cost. The five that we took up on Monday, three of them were $25, for example, and two of them needed, one needed antibiotics, one needed a couple of extra things, but they only charge for things that are medication. If they give fluids or do other things, they don't even charge for that. So, the total bill for all five of that particular trip with the two that needed additional care was $190.
Okay. I've heard comments or questions, so I guess what I would, the next step would be to sit down with Karen and the mayor and try to draw up a similar contract that we had with the cat nippers. And I think it's only fair, if they're taking care of feral cats in the city of Ole Miss, that they're reimbursed for their costs being incurred. And they're doing us a service, and I can tell you, there's nothing easy about it. And Karen's out there like sunup to sundown on the weekends, so. More power to her, God love her. How, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman McCall.
No, I'm in agreement with you. I guess my question is, the problem is that the city residents don't know they're supposed to keep their cats inside. They don't know that that's actually a city ordinance. I talk to people, they don't know. So I think with this, is we should also build in some kind of education program to tell people that you need to keep your cats in, just like you need to keep your dog on a leash or you need to keep your cat on a leash, because there are repercussions if you don't. Because, you know, I talk to people, and my patients, like, they don't know. They didn't know, like, there's, that there's a rule, if so to say, to keep their cat inside.
Well, let me start with the cat gets spayed, vaccinated, and released, is that fair?
Well, no, but I mean, you know, I think part of it is education. You know, I mean, education that this costs the city money, education that, you know, your cat runs the risk of getting diseases, feline leukemia. The risk, the fact is that, just like you have your dog on a leash, you need to keep your cat in the house or on a leash. Or we'll do what we would do with a dog, which is, we'll find you. I mean, that's, that's it. I mean, that's why we're having a problem is because we, as cat owners, let our cats go out. And by the way, I think we should, male cats can impregnate more females than females can have litters, so just saying, as we look at that too. But I'm in agreement, I think we should reimburse them because it truly is a service.
Yeah, okay. Alderman, wait.
And I agree, John. I think it's a problem, and I think you're doing a great job. Thank you. But I also think along with that education, we really need to educate people to quit feeding them. I know, you know her, she's over on Reed Street, and she constantly is telling her neighbor, quit feeding the cats, and there's just tons of them. And I think that's gotta be part of that education too, and maybe, I don't know, some kind of tendency, but, you know, I mean, you can fix out of cats in the world, but if people are still doing the same behavior, what are you changing?
Well, with the feral cats, if you can get at least the females spayed, through attrition naturally, the population will decrease. Feral cats are unsocialized with humans, so it's not, there is an issue for certain people letting their cats out. But in addition to that, it's the feral population. And, you know, I understand people putting out food because they're, they're gonna just keep traveling. They're going to find somebody that's going to be willing to feed them. You know, they're just gonna move to a different area. But you've got to attack the core problem of making sure they can't reproduce. And then through attrition, the problem, I've seen studies in, like Vermont has an amazing problem that they don't have stray cats. So we, at one point when we were overpopulated shelter, we're transporting some of our cats up to Vermont shelters because they didn't have enough cats. Because their strong spay neuter programs had eliminated that as a problem.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'm in favor, give her some mic.
Yep, okay.
John, I'm in favor, but this brings up, I would like to know if we're, if we haven't discussed animal control, and that seems to have fallen off the radar, so I'm curious if anything's ever gonna happen there.
Yeah, we've, we're working with, we have an animal control officer now. We're developing a contract for that person, so it isn't working.
And is that just for dog-related matters, Mayor? Or is that an opportunity to sit down with them at the table about a cat problem?
Yes, it's gonna be everything.
Okay.
It's not just a dog control officer, an animal control officer.
All right.
We're trying to stay within the limits of that.
Great, thank you, Mayor. All right. Any questions for us, Karen?
No.
All right. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Sorry about the delay.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, I've got just a quick request, and I'm not exactly sure. We've got our new DDW director here, so hello. So perhaps this is for perhaps the mayor as well as our new DDW director. So, we were informed here, and I saw, I won't go into too much detail, but we were informed that the YMCA will no longer require North 10th Street 400 block. And as such, that was one of the brick streets that was slated for improvements last year. We invited Bob Rain to ask for money to make some improvements to Brick Streets, do some repair work, and because we thought that we weren't sure of the future of North 10th Street there, that was taken away. So the work was never done to North 10th Street. It's a really rough area.
What I missed here, the YMCA's not gonna be needing it anymore?
That's, yes, that's what we were informed. So they've got a different plan over there, and I will comment on their plan, but that we were informed they would not no longer need North 10th Street. So, I was gonna ask the mayor and our DDW director if there was still funding remaining in that capital fund. Linds, I don't know if we ever closed that capital fund out, or if there's still money remaining in that where we had set aside, I know we set up a capital fund for Brick Street improvements.
Look, I don't know exactly how much money.
Okay. But.
We have to look, we'll have to look into that and see if there's still. If not, we'll get it on for, have to get it out for probably next year.
Okay. And if there could be an opportunity to just fix that street up with whatever the funding that had originally been intended for North 10th?
I'll leave the topic. I drove over there, and it's interesting because part of the street is paved, and then it's a Brick Street, and then it goes back to a P Street. And people might hate me for this, though. I hope we just paved it. Let's have it over.
I.
I mean, I looked at.
That would make the neighbors happy.
Second Street, sixth or fifth street that we just milled down to the brick. We paved over them. And I was watching when they were doing Euclid, that was one of the streets we were supposed to do last year. They did it this year. And I'm watching that, it's no longer a residential neighborhood. It's a commercial neighborhood. There's trucks up and down that street two or three times a day, delivery trucks because of the Bartlett, which I'm, you know, the Bartlett brings a lot of business into Ole Miss. But we're fixing a brick street that by next year, it'll be just as bad. Because I watched them, they pick up the bricks, they level the dirt, they put some kind of sand in, and then they put the bricks back down. And then your 10-ton truck comes along, and it's just gonna start sinking. So I guess this is such a short little script. I never paid it.
If they could use the funding to pay it, I think the residents there would appreciate it, and those who visit the YMCA would appreciate it. They did that to, that was the move that was done for South Fifth Street, raised by Irving and Henley. And the residents are like, we don't need a fancy Brick Street, you know, rehab project. Just pave it, and we'll be thrilled. And they worked, right? So, I think that would be a viable solution, if we could use that funding to just pave the entire, the remaining part of the street. I think that would make everybody happy. So, I wanted to pass that along.
I'll be happy to get rid of that, and we'll take a look there.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. I don't have anything else on our agenda here tonight. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Did I go second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned, and we're gonna jump right into the regular meeting of the County Council for Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. Well, the court has called the attendance floor.
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis here. Alderman Gonzalez here. Alderman McCall.
Here.
Alderman Robinson.
Here.
Alderman Anastasia. And President Crawford.
Here. Please rise for your vote.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
United States of America, and to the Republic of America, on the nation under God, in the world, where every justice is served.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Ole Miss County Council was held on Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, at 8:10 PM. Present were Alderman Crawford, Witt, Panis Gonzalez, Bea Zoom, McCall, and Anastasia. Next up was Alderman Robinson.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Could I go second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Community reports and unfinished council business done. Communications from the mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. I'm just up front here. We have tonight with us the Special Olympics bowling team, who went to competition in Ithaca back here just a week or so ago. So, we have certificates for them. So I'd like to call up Adam Bennett. He had a bronze medal in singles and gold medal in team competition for the bowling. Christopher Case. Christopher had a gold medal in singles and a gold medal in team bowling competition. We have William Phi, who had a gold medal in singles and a silver medal in team competition. Stephanie Hornaday. She had a bronze medal in singles and a silver medal in team. Is she here?
Steven's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steven, he's not here? I'm sorry. David Jones, gold medal in singles and a gold medal in team. David's not here? Matthew Mitchell. He had a silver medal in singles and a silver medal in team. And I don't know, this is a new person around town here, I don't know. Larry Ordway. Larry had a gold medal in singles and a gold medal in team. And Stephanie Vanderhoff. She had a gold medal in singles and a silver medal in team. And I have a recognition here for Dr. Carl Case. He is one of the coaches to this team, who ended up with nine gold medals, five silver medals, and two bronze medals. And we also, is Marcia here?
I'll get that part.
Okay, Marcia is the other coach, same thing. Nine gold medals, five silver medals, and two bronze medals.
You're gonna need a really big cabinet for all those matters. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. You're awesome. That was awesome. Anything else, Mr. Mayor? No, that's it, they're made, thank you. Okay. Missing ladies, communications?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Propose legislation and propose.
PL number 78-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, for resolution by Council President. PL number 79-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, August 9th, 2022, for resolution by Council President.
Okay. Before I open up the public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to any of the Alderman to make a statement at this time. Alderman Robinson?
This is just gonna be brief. This is just a congratulations to the crew that just left. That's the type of stuff you wanna see in Ole Miss, you know? And it was nice to see them being recognized for such a great feat, so that's all.
Thank you, Alderman.
Just so, just to the Alderman know, they were also given a police escort out of town, and when they returned to town, their bus was escorted. And that was really special for them.
Alderman Witt?
Yeah, and I think Alderman Robinson was right. I think we need to do more of that. I just wanted to thank Harvey Carter. I've heard lots of folks really appreciate the fiber of Zach after two years of not having him. And hopefully, we can find a way to pay for him this coming year.
Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing, we'll quickly read the public comment statement.
The public comment portion of the County Council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, County Council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right. At this time, I will invite any members of the public. Go first with podium, say your name and address, you'll have five minutes.
Charlie, I'm Charlie Daniels, 306 South Dairy, Ole Miss, New York. And I've got, what am I gonna say, scripted, so it shouldn't take more than five minutes. So, Mayor Alio and all the persons, I wanted to personally thank you for your support during a very scary and stressful time. I've never lived in a neighborhood where racist comments, dead carcasses thrown onto my property, or large gouts of flint stood on the sidewalk in front of my home were acceptable. Mr. Panis, I want to tell you that I have a great deal of respect for you. You were honest in your opinion, and you didn't know how the fence would make me feel safer, but pointed out that the precedent had already been established. Your agenda was more concerned for your own neighborhood, but your overall assessment was honest, and I thank you for that. Mr. Gonzalez, this is kind of gossipy, but I was told before I ever came to present my situation to the council on the 14th, that you were not going to vote for me, and that you were sure that the mayor would not allow me to have the fence. I don't, like, I don't know if that's true or not true, but I just wanted to let you know that that was the word on the street, and so you know who you said or didn't say whatever to. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. The other thing is, I want to reiterate to you that I have no hard feelings with your vote. You and I had a great conversation, and I'm not a person that harbors hard feelings. We just had a different difference of opinion. Mayor, I want to apologize to you. I thought you were attempting to retaliate against me because you didn't understand a comparison I made about you and Ward being old white men couldn't understand my experience as a black woman. I suggested that the committee needed someone with expertise in DEI committee structure to lead us. When I read your letter that you sent, had forwarded to me to inform me that the fence needed to be removed, I realized that you couldn't allow me to just start thinking that I'm special and have city residents all rile up, putting fences and such things in these minutes. That degree of integrity and concern for the community is admirable, and I hope you can forgive me for thinking your integrity was anything less than stellar. I would like to mention one thing to you, sir, and I hope you can take this in the spirit which I intended. In the veto meeting, Mr. Anastasia stated, Ms. Daniels indicated someone through the code enforcement, someone through code enforcement indicated she could put the fence there. Mayor stated, this is not true. Sir, that is the equivalent of calling me a liar, and it's in writing. As a citizen, I came with a plea for help. I received a reprieve, and you turn around and call me a liar? Also, you made a statement at the meeting on the 14th when I presented my request and concerns. I don't understand why you would think that I would lie about something like that. And then I found out later that the code enforcement officer actually ended up being fired. So, he's fired, I'm a liar, moving on. It's historical, we don't need to rehash that stuff. But I do want to use this as an opportunity to, what I'll call a teachable moment. The appropriate comments to hit to the same point would have been, my office is unable to verify da, 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 and I would be remiss in my duty as mayor to say one way or the other due to the sensitive nature of the subject. Or, I don't doubt Ms. Daniels may have been told da, da, da. However, the information she was given was incorrect, and without some kind of verification, I hesitate to take any action which would. I hesitate to take any action which would set a precedent we can't continue. Or, the code officer who had that conversation is no longer with the organization and we weren't able to locate any documentation to support Ms. Daniels' claim one way or the other. It's all water over the bridge, I honestly don't have any hard feelings toward anyone on council, any Alderman person, mayor, president, any of that. I am not a person who harbors ill feelings because ill feelings make people sick. I've got more precautions in place so I feel less stressed and the chain link fence diminishes the beauty, the beauty of my beautiful home, so mayor, thank you for reinforcing that idea. So, all of this brought me to a conclusion or two. One, if people in my neighborhood elected to run across in my front yard, torch my house or ambush me in some way, I'm, I feel fearful that I couldn't count on a majority of white council members to help me protect my person and or my property. This council doesn't understand what it's like to have people be just plain nasty because they have a perception that they have the mayor and code on their side. I will say that things have simmered down and the comments aren't as loud or bold as they were. Number two, the next conclusion is we, the city of Olean, are the sick trying to heal the sick without the proper PPE, that's personal protective equipment or tools for treatment. We don't have barf bags, we don't have sharps containers, we don't have pain relievers, and we don't have sutures. The community needs exposure and other perspective to help people become knowledgeable and aware that they have options. I'm good with you all and hope that if you ever see me out in public, please do not mention the word fence, I mean, fence power. And, um, be well. Thank you for your time, I appreciate the support you've given me.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? At this time, I will call all the comments closed. Finances built?
None.
Resolutions?
Resolution number 74 dash 22, PL number 66 dash 22, Alderman Crawford seconded by Alderman Witt. To pen, to amend the city of Olean code of ordinances, section 24 dash 256, riding bicycles in public parks or playgrounds.
Okay, so just as a reminder, we discussed this, uh, previously in committee and, uh, this allows everyone to legally ride their bike through our parks, um, and you just have to give the right of quiet to any pedestrian. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Will the clerk please call the board?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Six ayes, one answer. Resolution number 75 dash 22, PL number 67 dash 22, Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Anastasia. To amend the city of Olean code of ordinances, section 24 dash 257, use of bicycles and rollerblades to include electric scooters and electric bicycles, extend the business district, and amend fines for offenses, storage, and employment.
Okay, this too was discussed previously in committee, um, and before I, uh, open the vote on this, I would like to just, um, pass along, uh, some information to the council and, and truly ask the mayor, um, and our police department for some assistance. Uh, this, this happened literally about three nights ago, um, on one of our walks, uh, outside of what is currently the business district, so this happened right down by, uh, St. Vincent De Paul and Wendy's, which is outside of our downtown business district because that stops at the train tracks. Um, there were some kids, uh, with their bikes who came flying past us and then they were kind of ramping, there's a big ledge, uh, along Wendy's drive-through area and they were ramping, okay, their bikes speeding up and then out into the sidewalk. Coming towards them, he can't see, it is an elderly gentleman with a cane walking very, very slowly, um, and the one, I mean, he had to, uh, quick stop it and fall backwards, uh, because the one kid came flying at him. And so he kept shuffling along. I went over to those kids, um, and they probably were about, um, 10, 11, 12 years old. And politely, professionally, I said, hey guys, I said, that's really dangerous, right? There's pedestrians, this is a pedestrian zone, you can't do that here. Today's youth don't take that sort of criticism, okay? They don't take that sort of, and I can, I'm not gonna mention the expletives, right? That they, they told me to go, you know, such and such. Um, and, and then, as a, retaliation or not, we continued our walk and then all of them came flying up and one went right past my daughter and tapped her on the shoulder as, you know, and, you know what, that's unacceptable. All, they rode their bikes all the way up and doing jumps and flips on, right on, uh, on the sidewalk and, and, and we kept saying, you know, looking for the police. I was gonna fly, I mean, we don't need to be harassed on a walk, you know, because I, I try, try to be professional and say, hey, that's dangerous and I just read online for what it's worth, okay, about, about adolescents in the Olean Center Mall, uh, taking skateboards in there and, and doing, I mean, I don't know, like, they don't have something better to do apparently, but if we could, you know, it's one thing to have a law, but who can help to crack down on some of the enforcement, um, is, is what I'm asking the mayor, um, to, you know, I would love to see, I, I, honestly, tickets for, uh, for breaking this. There is a bike lane there, okay? Electric bikes, electric, electric scooters, they don't belong on the sidewalk. Uh, and so, and that's my, my two cents. I wanted to pass that along to you guys. Um, any comments or questions before voting on this? Alderman Robinson?
I just wanted to reiterate that, um, I am for, uh, amending or, yeah, amending this ordinance, uh, for the things that are in here, but extending the business district I cannot go along with. Um, I, I think there's enough restrictions, uh, like you just said, uh, just playing with the mayor and, uh, police chief, if we can get more enforcement, I think that's perfectly fine, but extending the, the district itself, um, I can't go along with that. I don't wanna put our kids into the streets, uh, especially with the fact that not only are some of our kids, uh, disrespectful, but some of the drivers are the same, so.
I, I have a, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I agree with Vernon, I, I support this, that, that there's really no, uh, you know, no, no issue with, uh, obviously, um, you know, putting this in place. My only concern is, um, you know, I, I don't wanna push kids back out into the streets, right? My son's 15, um, it would, it makes me very nervous to him, the, the idea of him, um, driving his, uh, little e-bike there through the roundabouts and getting hit by somebody who's texting or trying to, you know, run through there or whatnot. I think it's also important to, you know, consider the notion that we, um, we use this term shared path, right, shared use, and there's also shared responsibility, right? And if you're a pedestrian, you, you have the responsibility to, you know, be mindful of your surroundings and, um, I'm, I'm not saying like, like, well, the pedestrians are equally at fault for, for an incident like that, right? If your daughter didn't, you know, should've seen that kid coming from behind, right? That's clearly not it, but at the same time, you, you do, um, you know, have to, you, you do hold the responsibility as a pedestrian, you can't just walk out into the street, right? You do have to look both ways, you do have to be careful. I don't know, I just, I just don't wanna get too bogged down blaming all the kids on their bikes and looking.
Yeah, honestly, Paul, I mean, I'm not, that was one instance, I'm not blaming the kids on their bike, I'm blaming the adults that are riding their bikes, the, the adults that are riding the, the, the electric scooters down, down, you know, um, it took me once, the first time I got my scooter and Chief Rowley was like, Crawford, what are you doing on the sidewalk? That, you can't be on the sidewalk.
See, that, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me, though. You're not gonna drive that, you're an adult, you're not gonna drive that like an idiot, right? You're gonna be responsible.
Well, I am, but.
But, but the same people that we're gonna, I mean, those people who we don't think are gonna be able to drive responsibly on sidewalks, people get a driver's license. I mean, are they gonna, whatever, I might be like.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Alderman McCall?
I'm gonna say the same thing, I, I agree, um, with monitoring and I agree that, um, we need to do enforcement, but I'm not in agreement with extending. I, I, every Thursday, I've been trying to go up to the park and kind of walk around and stuff and, and walk around downtown and that, and I, you know, I watched a, you know, a gentleman with his younger child and they were riding and, you know, if they, you know, I wanna make sure that they're safe too and, and how do we go ahead and do that? And particularly as we go further down west state, I just don't, I, I just don't think that that's called for there. So I, I agree with all that except for the extending of the, uh, the business district.
Alderman, Alderman, what?
Yeah, um, I have a different take on it. I think, um, extending it, especially on North Union Street, uh, is a must. You know, I don't know, I'm one of the people that weed and I have a flea bug and a guy with an electric bike almost hit me because I was running over weed. I'm, you can't miss me, you know, I'm not some delicate little flower. And I kinda said something to him, he just, you know, like, he took me off. But it, it's like, and when you have kids, parents have to be responsible. I can't imagine any parent taking their young child, five, six years old, up North Union Street, I'm sorry, I never did that with my kids, why would anyone do that? But I, I just think extending the North Union Street part just makes sense. Um, now that we have a dispensary, it, it's game time, you know, there's folks out there smoking on the sidewalk, sitting there, and people are flying through their bikes. It's like the Wild West at that end of, of Union Street. And I think sometimes people just picture the business district up here. The traffic's the same down there, whether you're doing this roundabout or that roundabout. And I just think, you know, I guess, um, I look at it as, I mean, I didn't get hurt or anything, but it was just the idea that they think they can do it. And, and he wasn't a kid, he was in, probably in his twenties. So I just think if, if you don't set some barbary house for people, they are gonna do it and it's like anything, there's always gonna be somebody that just says, this is my life, I'll do what I wanna do. That's just human nature, you're not gonna fix that. And I think we've said it over and over, you can't legislate the common sense. But I will support it only because I think the other end of North Union Street deserves, you should be able to walk, you should be able to weave, you should be able to cross the street without getting hit by somebody on the e-bike. And this guy was flying, you know, he slowed down, um, for a few seconds to say hi and talk to the folks at the dispensary and then he just flew around the corner. And I'm like, oh, you know, so I just think, um, no parent's gonna take their little kid up North Union Street, that, that would be, yeah, there are dumb parents. We have legislative responsibility.
I would take my kids, my younger kids up there.
But we want them.
I would take mine, oh yeah. I guess I'm a dumb parent.
Absolutely, I would. I mean, because how else do you take them downtown?
Right, we want those kids. You gotta give, normalize people riding their bikes in the street, right? I was on my bike with my son the other day and, uh, I'm in the, like, waiting in line to go through the roundabout and some idiot beeped at me, like, because I shouldn't have been there, it's like, are you, are you adding, are you crying, like? And it's just because they don't see enough of that and, I don't know, need to normalize at least adults. I don't know, how do you do that? Hire a joint on more cops and post them at every corner?
Okay. All right, uh, seeing no further discussion, will the, uh, clerk please call the board?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
No.
Alderman Robinson?
No.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, board of two. Resolution number 76 dash 22, PL number 78 dash 22, to authorize the mayor to submit a grant application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation through the Water Quality Improvement Project Program for the South Olean Syphon Project.
This was discussed in the committees. Um, any final comments or questions? Uh, Leonard K. Miss Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Witt? Anyone turn? Alderman McCall? Will the clerk please call the board?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, board of two.
Okay, anything before we adjourn? Anyone? Uh, seeing none? Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Saying, Alderman Pannas, all in favor? I am opposed, motion carried, adjourn, adjourn.